Good afternoon. Welcome to this Committee of the Hope Public Safety and Human Services for the City Council of Redmond, Washington. My name is Jerilee Anderson. I'm the presiding officer this afternoon, and I'm joined today by all the council members, including Mr. Carson, Mr. Fields, Ms. Forsyth, Ms. Khan, Ms. Kritzer, and Ms. Stewart. And we have five items on our agenda this afternoon, beginning with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, or DEI, monthly update report with Ms. Jan Harrison.
Good afternoons. Nice to see everyone. Since we last met, last month, I've been very busy. For example, I've been working with the ready work, with ready work, training work with the directors, supported by, led by Anita Page. And we had a director's training session with Anita on the 10th of this month. And we also did, I reviewed the ready training director materials, you know, coming in where the ready training had already been implemented. I'm still playing catch-up in terms of familiarizing myself and informing myself and getting up to speed to really have a working knowledge of the ready training program. And then I've been collaborating and getting some additional feedback and information, touching base with Anita. Also, I've been focused on Title VI, demonstrating the commitment on the part of the city of Redmond to comply with federal, state, and local laws, codes, codes, and rules and regulations. And that involves Title VI, but also Title VII and ADA, the, per the Equity, the EEOC Office, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and Watch Dock. And what that included was doing a deep dive in terms of the Title VI plan, which basically gives us a layout in terms of all the priorities and concerns that as a city governance we must be in compliance with, and it kind of gives us a roadmap. And having done that deep dive, it was a great learning experience in terms of how to implement in real, in, in real time, you know, Title VI concerns, dealing with, you know, protected classes such as race, gender, abilities, or origin, nationality of origin, and things like that. And then also, there's, there's different components that supplement the Title VI plan, which includes the assurances, which is about a promissory, promissory agreement that the city has to develop in terms of being in compliance. And then realizing that to really truly intimate, implement the Title VI compliances, that there's opportunity for me to actually lead some Title VI trainings for the city staff. The second is to touching base and exploring opportunities in terms of tribal relations and focused on developing an engagement strategy on how best to build respectful and meaningful and impactful relations with tribal nations regardless of their sovereignty, because not all may be acknowledged by the federal government broadly. And so what that involved is next month, working on the proclamation for National Native American Heritage Month, which takes place in November. And then part of that is to be able to maybe, is to feature a profile telling the story and telling in real time how the story and the lived experience of the Snoqualmie Tribe, and then just overall meeting with counterparts and planning to talk about tribal relations strategies. Also, I've been working on the Redmond 2015, 2050, partnering up with planning in terms of how to, the goal is to, they're in the review process right now, and so I've been partnering up with them in terms of how to incorporate the feedback that we get from the community engagement. And part of that is to develop a comprehensive language plan in terms of being able to explore vocabulary and use it appropriately, but also looking at it to be, to not use terms that will perpetrate harm, understanding that living in a diverse community, you have to be mindful in the fact that we're thinking, you know, into the future, that communities that have historical harm, how that we don't perpetrate that in meaningful ways. And so coming up with and developing a lexicon that will help us, really serve us in this work. Let's see. Also, last month, in September, we celebrated Welcoming Week, which took place, it's a community event that took place from September 8th through the 17th. And in that effort, we reconnected with the Welcoming Redmond team, and from that, we ended up having a intercultural potluck internally. And that was quite amazing to have staff share their stories through their food. And, you know, it's, it's one thing to be able to eat some good food, but then to know the stories and why you're eating what you're eating is pretty compelling, and it really does provide an opportunity to, to build knowledge and openness and making work feel less like work. Let's see. And then the community engagement. I'm working on organizing an ongoing strategy to inform and collaborate with you as city council, residents, businesses, nonprofits, schools, et cetera, through the DEI lens with the goal to create an intercultural and a Redmond. And so I've been going out, meeting and engaging with the community, and such as the equity. During Welcoming Week, there was an Equity and Housing event at the Together Center, led by East Side for All, which was quite compelling. And we had, I had a chance to engage and meet with city planners on the east side and also represent Redmond, the DEI perspective from the city of Redmond. So that was really quite compelling. There was a very engaging conversation, and the idea that gentrification, there, there are some good things about gentrification came up as a, as a, as a possibility, and that was kind of like a hanging pause in terms of not having enough time to unpack that. But it was, it was interesting, and I guess having, having, attending events, you know, to engage with the community, you know, it's always, you're always going to have the opportunity to engage and, you know, hear different perspectives, and so it did service purpose very well. And then I met with the Redmond Library in terms of how, moving into 2024, we can collaborate in terms of some community engagement possibilities, in terms of how to inform and engage with the community in a meaningful way. So we have some ideas that I am going to keep, I guess I'm going to be a bit discreet about that until they come to fruition, because I don't want to speak before the cake is done. And that's about it, unless you have some questions. I'll give the floor back to you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harrison, for that wonderful and informative report. Are there questions from the council? Of course there are. I saw Ms. Stewart's hand first.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harrison. It's such a delight to have you come every single month, so I just want to give that feedback to you that it's so helpful to come. We're putting, we're kind of following your story along, and so each and every month, it's very helpful, and I do appreciate your time. Really appreciated the updates, and especially the things related to internally here in the staff, the example of the potluck and other things, but the things that are helping to create connection and capacity beyond yourself and, and to help the whole team be stronger. On that note, we, the council, included in the budget for next year, an opportunity for you to be able to make a hire, to get some additional support. And I just wanted to ask if that is something that you are starting to put a little framework around, maybe some of the things you might be needing next year, or if there's anything that we can do to help, you know, make the path more clear for you.
Well, understanding, it's, it's kind of like being new, I have to say, is, is a learning experience on its own, in the sense that I hadn't been new to an organization in a very long time. So just understanding that I don't know a lot, and I have to say, going on my seventh month, eighth month, I am getting my bearings, and as the year 2020 is ending, I'm, I'm a planner, so I'm already thinking about what 2024 will look like. And so I, I'm excited about that in the sense of being able to start planning now and to be able to really be, give thorough consideration in terms of what needs to be done, how I want, how I want the work to be done, and, and how I want it to hopefully impact in a meaningful way. And also, I'm, I'm really building an infrastructure, a DEI infrastructure, which hopefully will be able to be sustained into the future in terms of how we, you know, in terms of all the points, in terms of community engagement, how, you know, the welcome being part of a, being considered a welcoming city, what that looks like in the truest form, in terms of unpacking, understanding that Welcoming Week is all about, you know, welcoming immigrants from all over the world and creating a more inclusive and, and sense of belonging for people who come from all over the world in terms of different languages and cultures, but also incorporating the existing stories of those who are already marginalized here in the states, and what that looks like, and how those two perspectives intersect, and how that can be a great opportunity to foster welcoming in a way that hasn't necessarily been teased out. So they, I took the scenic route to answer your question, the, the staff opportunity in terms of hiring next year. I, I look forward to that. I see that that could be utilized as I'm developing this infrastructure. And as always, I do find great value in coming here monthly to be able to, to speak with you and share what I'm doing, and I really do appreciate, in that, I really do feel your support, and I, I feel like I have the flexibility to reach out to you, and if I have any questions or utilizing you as a resource, so I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Great. Well, I look forward to hearing more about that position in the new year. And also, I, you know, for myself personally, like, I trust your judgment, so if that, those resources need to turn into something else, because it would better serve the infrastructure you're building, then that would be a conversation, you know, I would very much be happy to see us all have, so thanks again.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Kritzer.
Thank you. And just a follow-up on that conversation, because I recently was discussing this topic behind the scenes with the mayor, and I did want to state, just on the record, that I know the council's intention was to give you the opportunity to kind of get on board this year without having to also hire and train a new staff member, but that, and I know that the person, the FTE that we allocated for, for next year was with one-time funds, but in, I think our vision was that we were going to use that to kind of start that position, but in the next budget to, to make that an ongoing position, so the goal would be, it's a long-term, long-term position, not just for, for one year of support. So just wanted to, to share that, because I think we discussed it at length, just as a reminder to everyone, as we get into the planning for this, this new person that hopefully will come and help support and grow your team, that, you know, it's really meant to be a, a growth of the team, so hopefully that, that will be of help to you. Two questions that I had is, one, in terms of the, the work on tribal relations, great to hear that you're working on that. One discussion that we've been having for several years is around, around doing land acknowledgements and, and formalizing a land acknowledgement that is kind of our city's statement that we use at different events. And I know we've had a discussion about really wanting to do that in collaboration with, with the tribes that, that call Redmond home, and so curious if that's at all a part of the discussions and the work that you're doing. It's obviously not the most important thing, but it, but it is, it is something that, that has, has been coming up, and I know we want to do it in a meaningful way, so I'm just curious to hear if there's any development on that.
Well, in terms of like, as I'm strategizing and working with my counterparts here at the city, is to really understand the role and the value of land acknowledgement, and if they are more so about, from a performative perspective, that I guess maybe succinctly, if you're acknowledging land and you're not giving it back, what's the, it kind of is, adds insult to injury, I think. And so I'm still unpacking that in terms of the deep dive that I'm doing and really understanding what would be beneficial for nation tribes, as well as to inform the larger Redmond community at large. I think that understanding the historical perspective of Redmond to Indian country and the native tribes, that hearing their voices and getting their input is, I think, a non-negotiable. And I think that if we're really looking at not perpetrating any more harm, I think that, that there's much work, many conversations to be had in terms of really understanding their perspective and how to really move forward in a respectful, collaborative, strategic way, because I think there's great, there's great interest, and I think that there's much that could be, much good that could be done.
Thank you. Yeah, and I do appreciate that approach, because I do think with land acknowledgements, it is important for them to not be performative and, and instead to, to be meaningful, right? As if we're, if we were to do that, if we were to create one that we use for our city as a standard practice, to really be able to, to build those as part of our tribal relations work, and, so anyway, I appreciate you discussing that, and I guess I would just put that as, as a discussion to find out, is this something of interest to our tribal partners? And if it is, what, what type of language we might be using to best be acknowledging the past, present, and future? So, yeah, appreciate that. And then second question for you is, you mentioned about lexicon development. I know that in some cities-
Repeat that, sorry, I didn't.
Oh, you mentioned about lexicon development with Redmond 2050. I know in some cities, they have been looking at removing the word "master" from many of their different city plans and, and other pieces. Is that going to be part of the scope of your review, since we have that in many pieces of our, our city plans?
I see, I, I do advocate for the need for that word to be, you know, to be of concern, as I'm still just now really starting to do the deep dive on the existing draft of 20, Redmond 2050, that, so I, other than coming in, trying to create a vocabulary that won't perpetrate harm, but also to maybe introduce new vocabulary that will benefit, be beneficial, and what that looks like. And so, as an example, the acronym BIPOC, that, you know, Standing for Black Indigenous People of Color, I think that, that has, that is perceived by many communities as being offensive, particularly to the, the Black and the Indigenous, understanding that the POC part, that those are very, very vastly different experiences in terms of their relationship to this country. And so, at this point, it has evolved from being the acronym to being Black and Indigenous and BIPOC, where the Black and the Indigenous are spelled out, recognizing the significant difference. And so, the opportunity to maybe introduce something that is more useful and less harmful, removing that acronym entirely, is still to be determined, but there is, the feedback in the, in my space is that it's offensive.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Ms. Kritzer. Thank you for that response and that story. Mr. Fields.
Thank you. You guys can hear me okay, correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right. So I appreciate your leadership at the city. One maybe small request, that when you come back, and either November or December, if you could give the council a sense of how your leadership and guidance will be included in our budget process, which begins right after the first of the year. I know you have your hands full with a lot of other things, including the discussion you just had around 2050, but special thing for my heart is budget, because that's where we typically put our money, where our mouth is, and I would like to see a lot of your ideas and thoughts be presented in the budget process. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Any other questions or comments from the council? Looks like you're all clear, Ms. Harrison. Thank you so much for that very informative report. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you. It's good to see all of you. Take care.
Yep. Next up on our agenda is two items from the fire department, our interlocal agreement for the colocation, not collection, of Redmond Medic 1, Unit 23, and the Kirkland Fire Station Number 27, with MSA Jim Whitney. And Mr. Shepherd, if you'd like to join us up here too, you can be up here for moral support with Chief Shepherd from our fire department. You can cheer him on from the audience, if you'd like to spectate instead. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Whitney.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the time tonight. So this, this one I'm actually excited about, I'm going to give you a little history lesson to kind of kick this off, just keep it short and sweet. The first medic units in King County were put in place in the early 70s. Evergreen Medic 1 started their very first medic unit to serve this region at Evergreen Hospital, which is currently our Medic 23, what we know as Medic 23. That, that unit lived at medic, or inside the hospital, essentially the emergency room, one of the rooms, the emergency room, up until about 2002. In 2002, we co-located with, in the Station 27, an old Station 27, and stayed in that facility up until 2010, about 2010. We moved back into the hospital when they finished the, the construction of the main, what we know as the main hospital today. We have been in that location since 2010. It's medics only, we're independent, we're not co-located within the fire station. We've, as important as history is, and the value of being back in that location that we were in the hospital, in the 70s, it was, it was very convenient, because we worked a lot with, I shouldn't say we, I wasn't part of it, but the medics at the time worked a lot with the physicians there. They were very supportive of the physicians on, on an hour-by-hour basis, just providing additional hands-on. We still do that today. It's, in some cases, when they have critical, critical calls come through the door, and we get a call from the hospital to go support that care, but it's, it's pretty rare in comparison to what it used to be like. We, we've recognized over the last 13 years, the value of co-location with our other stations. So Medic 35 is inside a fire station in Woodinville, and obviously Medic 19, which is here in Redmond. And that value of connecting the crews together all the time and, and having them in the same space is good for education, it's good for recruitment, it's good for team building, and just debriefing calls at the end of the call. So we've been on this path for about five years to get Medic 23 back into a Kirkland Fire Station. The old Station 27 was too old, too old, too small to accommodate the medic unit in there. When Kirkland made the decision to build a new Station 27, which is literally a block and a half north of the hospital on 132nd, we raised our hand and asked if we could be partners in that, in that endeavor. We did the work with King County EMS to identify location, the appropriate location, and found that the location that Medic 23 is in, at the hospital, is the prime location to serve the entire region, not just the city of Kirkland. And that's an important aspect of how our system is set up. These three medic units serve an area of about 350, or I'm sorry, 250,000 square, or 250 square miles, population about 333, 340,000 population in that area. And they do it in what we call a tiered response, and manage that entire response area. Medic 23 located in that location gives us quick access to 405, which is important for us to be able to drop into Bellevue if we need to, or up into Bothell, and sometimes even Snohomish County. It also gives us great access to all of Kirkland area, off of 132nd to 100th, and, and also the ability to drop back down into Woodinville and Redmond pretty quickly if needed to back up those units. So it's a prime location. King County agreed with that. As we moved this process forward, we had to have permission from King County to even look at a relocation, a move. A block and a half wasn't super significant, they were happy with that. They have come forward to help fund this ILA. So the ILA is this, is that we were asking for approval from the council to support us in this decision we're making. It's, the total cost is about $500,000, of which 100, so it all comes from King County EMS funds. Some of it is reserves that we have, some of it is reserves that King County has, that they're, they're supporting this decision with us. 180,000 will come from King County's reserves, 320,000 will come from Redmond reserves that are, that are in account kept at King County. The approvals have gone through all of King County EMS, the MSAC committees over the last couple of years, and construction of the building is near completion. If you've been down 132nd recently, you'll, or if you get an opportunity to go by, you'll see the new station. It's, again, just a block and a half north of Evergreen Hospital on 132nd. It's a beautiful new place that'll, that'll house truck company, engine company, aid car, and a medic unit out of the same, same station. So several bodies, and gives us that co-location model and the ability to, to interact at a high level with those crews. The, the benefits have, have been discussed, the finances have been discussed. We look at this as a, as a huge opportunity to increase our service capabilities and far, as far as relationships with Kirkland crews that we're missing currently, and a great opportunity to have a new space. It also provides us long-term stability. The lease is a 15-year lease with Kirkland. We fully anticipate that that'll be a rollover 15-year lease. The initial was a 15, to make sure that we got a return on the investment that we put into it, but there's no intentions that we would move out of there unless we made the decision at some point in time to move out of there in the future. So I'll stop there and take questions if there are any, and-
Questions from council. I see council member Forsyth.
Thank you. Fully in support of this. I think it's a great idea, makes perfect sense. I'm just interested in hearing more about those holdover funds and what those can be used for, what the parameters around that is.
Yeah, so the reserve funds have to be used for ALS-specific designation, so it can be used for facilities, it can be used for equipment purchases if we had the need, we could use it for staffing if we needed to upstaff. So currently, we have in the budget, we have, if you'll remember, we have parallel hires in the budget, because we anticipate several retirements coming through, to send, to select a paramedic or a student to go through school, send them to school and get them back, is about a two-and-a-half-year process. So we, we predict what retirements look like. We know we have several coming in the near future, so we were purposeful in the last budget to create four parallel hire positions. So essentially, what, that's my term, but what that means is that we can hire an employee, get them into school, get them in the process, and potentially have them back before retirement occurs, and that parallel hire would take that position on. That would be an example of an area where we would use those funds, just to make sure that we have the staffing when we need the staffing, when retirements occur. And I can give you other examples if you like, but that's, that's one, and then the facilities is another one.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
What is likely to happen with the current facility that they're being housed in?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. The hospital, if you'll remember, a hospital ran a levy about two years ago that did not pass. At that time, it might have been a little bit more than two years ago, but at that time, they were, they were in our space, and it's a very small space, it was a- It was a portion of the old emergency room in the hospital. They had been in that space, doing, beginning the engineering for what they anticipate to do with the hospital in the coming years. Their master plan that they currently have in place is to take the space that was the old emergency room, which is now accounting, and our Medic 1 quarters, and the spaces above it, which is currently the ICU, and that entire area will be remodeled, likely after the next levy, I would guess, but they're, they're still coming in and doing the measurements and starting the planning purposes for drawings to do that. So, we have a lease currently with, we just extended our lease. You'll remember, I was here probably six months ago or so to extend that lease, because it was set to expire last March. We extended it intentionally for two and a half, I think it's a two-year, three-year lease, I think actually it's a three-year lease, but they anticipate to be, at the end of that three-year term, to be in a position where they want to start moving forward with construction. So, we were at a place where, not only is this beneficial to us, but we were also at a place where we were likely going to have to look for another space for that unit. And fire stations are the key. I mean, ideally, we would look towards fire stations, but this went back to the study that was done by King County EMS, and identifying that location to be the best location, again, for us to serve regionally.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Other questions from the council? I've got a couple for you, sir. One is a request, so this is just for folks online and here in the chambers. This is an action requested for consent on Monday, November 6th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Cool. All right. That's where we're headed. One request I would have for the memo that's attached, thanks to Ms. Forsyth for asking the question on funds. The use of funds would be helpful to clarify that we can use it for facilities. It sounds like it's somewhat of a capital purchase, or a capital arrangement. I would appreciate that. And then additionally, if you could be specific about the amounts of which is coming from which funds, because I noticed that it didn't match the total number in the contract. It was like 427 in the actual contract, and you gave us an approximate amount.
Yeah, so, again, another great question. Thank you for that. So, the 427 is anticipated construction costs. There is an escalator in there for over costs, for change orders and things like that. We've allocated 500,000 for this project. We anticipate it to come in right at about 500,000 with change orders. And the 320,000 is coming from our Redmond reserves, and again, those aren't kept here in Redmond, those are kept at King County. And then the 180,000 is coming from King County reserves.
Okay. So, we're not seeing any money transacting through our accounts, or?
That's, they may pass through the books. You may see the dollars come through the books as they go between, between Redmond and Kirkland, but they, they are, it's passed through dollars.
Okay.
Just like everything that ALS is, essentially.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate it. If any of that clarification could be added to the memo for the Monday meeting, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
And then, just a general question, can Kirkland's staff from Medic 1 share the use of that aid car, or is it all Redmond staff?
So, this is a medic unit versus aid car, two different things. So, at the station, you'll have a ladder company that's dedicated, you'll have an engine company that is cross-staffed with an aid car, that's a BLS, and then you'll have a medic unit, which is advanced life support. So, it is a dedicated unit just for Medic 1, to provide the services to the Kirkland community and the surrounding communities around Kirkland. We will also have a backup medic unit in that location also, so in the event that a medic unit went down, and we, it needed to be towed, or whatever, we would have a backup unit to fall into, so out-of-service time was minimal.
Okay. And then, I guess my general question is, with the medics, how do we know if they are Redmond medics or Kirkland medics?
They are all, that's another great question. Thank you for that. So, all the medics that serve this, the entire area that I talked about, the 250 square miles, so essentially Bothell to Bellevue, and from the Lake Washington to the Cascade foothills, are all Redmond paramedics, Northeast King County Medic 1.
Okay.
They are employees of the Redmond Fire Department. Now, we say that, but we, when we test for these positions, we test throughout the entire consortium, which is inclusive of Eastside Fire and Rescue, Kirkland Fire, Duval Fire, and Redmond Fire, currently. And there's conversation about the potential in the future, and this will come back at some point for an update, if we go down this road, but the conversation of potentially opening that to a bigger pool also.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Kritzer?
Just going back to the ALS programmatic reserves, curious, do you know how much total we have in reserves held by King County?
I don't have that number handy in front of me. We do have a fairly well-funded reserve account with King County. Again, that's intentional for things like this that potentially come up. Again, we don't budget for those. We don't, those are not monies that are budgeted annually. We intentionally leave those in reserves in case we have needs, similar to the staffing needs, or, God forbid, we had a need for replacement apparatus because of damage to those, or facility upgrades like this. It's not huge, but it is enough to give us the ability to do something like this.
So, and even if we do something like this, we would still have some additional reserves, should there be some other needs as well?
That's correct. And we have, remember, this is levy-funded money from the King County EMS levy, the Medic 1 levy, it's an eight-year levy, or six-year levy, sorry. That levy is what funds all of this. If we don't pull annually, when we, we're budgeted, we're allocated a certain amount annually to pull back, if we don't spend that money, it sits and starts to build in our reserve account. So, fiscal responsibility keeps us in a place where we let that reserve account continue to build if we need it, for, call it reinventing fund, or whatever.
Thank you. Thanks for the work on this.
You bet.
How are we feeling about consent on November 6th, folks? I've got four in the room, online, a floating thumb, at least one. I think we're, I think we look pretty good on this item. All right. Thank you. Moving on to the next one, with the same cast of characters here, we have the Stryker Equipment Lease Agreement.
Okay. So, this one's a little different. This is a lease agreement with Stryker or Physio in our backyard here. We have been doing, over the last year and a half, we've been doing asset management within our fire department. We started with ALS and kind of worked through the entire department. During that process, we identified that we had Stryker cots and auto loads for our vehicles and stair chairs, and I can explain the difference between those three things if you would like. Identified that those had exceeded their lifespan, or were coming very close to exceeding their lifespan at the time. They have, there's a seven-year life of those, that equipment. If we get them serviced by the manufacturer, we can get another seven years out of them, which is exactly what we have done. So, we're sitting now, most of those are between 13 and, well, hitting, approaching 14 right now, and 16 years old. We absorb all the liability if there was some, an incident that happened, where there was a failure associated with one of those pieces of equipment, once they exceed that certification life that they currently have. As we identified this, we started looking at what's the cost, the replacement cost of these. It's not built into the budget. So, we went and talked with Stryker about the potential of a lease agreement. We have, this is a very small segment of the, of the equipment that we carry that is Stryker or Physio equipment, and it's the low-end dollar value of that equipment. All of our, the advanced life support AEDs that we use, LifePak 15 is a Physio Stryker product. Each one of those items is very expensive. We, as we went through this with Stryker and started talking to them, and they presented this lease option to us, we decided to move in that direction. It meets the needs that we have right now with current budget. It also meets our needs in the future of replacing, replacing that equipment, and replacing it, not just when it needs to be replaced, but replacing it as upgrades come to that equipment for us, that would be valuable to us to have, perhaps in the middle of its life cycle. So, as new equipment comes out, being on the lease, we're at the front of the line to get, transition that equipment out and get the new, newest, latest, greatest equipment as part of that lease. The LifePak 30 is coming, and that's the piece of, that is the most, the LifePak 15 is what we currently have. That is the most valuable piece of equipment we have, as far as caring for critically ill patients. We've been instrumental in the development of the LifePak 30. Our people have been working with Physio to, on the design of that, and the functions of that piece of equipment. It's not out yet, but we're excited, when it gets FDA clearance, that we might be able to be a part of that. So, this lease is a lead-in to that for us. Our current LifePaks aren't going to be part of this lease, it's just the cots, but we look forward to the future when that equipment becomes available, and we might be able to step into it, and this lease would be a leader for us to do that. This lease is solely focused on our gurneys, our auto loads, and our stair chairs for all of our aid cars and our medic units. Total cost of the, to replace this equipment, total cost to replace it, if we were to buy it off the shelf today and sweat out what we currently have to the new, is about $1.2 million that we would have to pay out now. That doesn't include any maintenance costs on that. It doesn't include our shop maintenance fees either. So, obviously restrictive where we are with budget. The lease agreement is a 1.3 million lease. It runs us about 200,000, a little over 200,000 a year in costs, but it covers all that equipment. That equipment is maintained through that, that cost. The equipment's completely maintained by Physio. They come out and do routine maintenance on the equipment, and we will cycle it out, again, if we, if there's new, latest, greatest, or at the end of the lease, we would cycle it into new equipment. It's a six-year lease. It gives us the capabilities to add an additional two years to it and buy the equipment outright if we chose to, and at that time, we could, we could add on by having their service agreements, we could potentially tack on additional five years and have ownership of that equipment, or we can, at that time, make the decision to roll into another lease agreement. It also gives us the ability to, if, like I talked about, the LifePak 30s, if we get to a place where we start, want to have more conversation about expansion and adding other equipment, we can do that, within the duration of the timeframe of this lease. So, we think it's a great move for us. We think it's not only a great move for now to answer the question about the cots, but also a great move for us to answer questions about our future, and it could be, currently it doesn't, we don't use Physio or Stryker BLS AEDs, but we're in a need, we're coming close to a need to have to repurchase those in time. And we, Stryker would be obviously a company that we would look at. There's some other requirements that we have that we're still trying to get, make sure that manufacturers have the ability to do, which is a whole other topic, but we just feel that this lease gives us more flexibility and capabilities to be operationally sound for the equipment we need, and gives us a good stability in budgeting for the future as we move forward. So, I'll stop there if there's any more questions.
Thank you for that information. And once again, this is an item for consent on Monday, November 6th, and I see Mr. Fields with his hand. Go for it, sir.
Thank you. So, your comment at the beginning of your presentation concerned me a bit. You sort of tied asset management into this, and then, what I thought I heard you say was, there was no replace-me, replacement fund for these assets as we were going along, and that that sort of drove your decision to go to lease. That's a little bit concerning to me. Number one, that we don't have asset replacement methodology in place, and two, that that would become sort of the tipping point to go to a lease. Do you have a buy-lease analysis that you can share with council?
Can you ask the last part of that question? Do we have a, I didn't hear the, do we have a what, lease analysis?
A purchase.
Purchase versus lease.
We do, we have, so we did get a quote for the purchase, outright purchase of the equipment. It wouldn't be a lease, it would be a purchase of the equipment with us being responsible to do all the maintenance on it. That total came out to just, right about 1.2 million with shipping and taxes included. And it did not include any of the service maintenance that they're providing on the lease. It does not, it also does not include any of our shop time, or, when we, when we did this, we went back and looked at our shop and said, what's our service time on each of these cots? How many hours is it, and what's the total cost in parts that you're providing? It came out to about 150, 60 hours annually for our shop to do to service this equipment, and parts were about $20,000.
Let me, let me, let me make sure you understand my question. You're sort of giving me the purchase-lease analysis as it goes, and I'm not even going to remember half of it, to be honest with you. My question is, do you have in writing, or in some sort of document, a purchase-lease analysis that you can share with council, so that we can see this? Because, part of my concern is, you know, making a decision like this, as I pointed out, that there might be a budget shortfall. That concerns me. And then, the second thing is, you're starting a precedent here, and if we're going to do that, that's a major policy decision that I think the council needs to make sure we understand as we go forward.
Yeah, okay. Now, I understand where you are. I'm sorry. Let me back up. So, for, for, as far as assets are concerned, we have record for the, for, on the ALS side of the House. So, remember, this is incorporating both BLS, or suppression, and ALS into the same purchase, or same lease. The, on the ALS side of the House, this lease agreement resembles 39% of the products that we're talking about. On the BLS side, it's 61%. On the ALS side, that money is, is part of, is in the general fund, part of our budget currently, and it is covered as part of capital purchases. The BLS side did not have these built into the reserve for replacement. What we have come to, to support that, so the ALS portion is complete, that 39% in the current budget. In the BLS, on the BLS side, or the suppression budget, we are going to pull that, that money from BLS Core Services access through King County EMS, which we have the ability to do. Again, that's money that's available to us through BLS Core Services, is an account that's specified to Redmond Fire for equipment just like this, to do a purchase. That'll, that'll take care of us through this current biennium without concern. We will need to do a budget, I'm trying to make sure I got the terms right here, so let me look real quick in my, the memo that I put out. The, I just want to make sure I say the right thing. So, service enhancement will need to be done going into the next biennium budget, to include that 61% portion of the lease agreement that we have, we will have with Stryker. Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure. I just, I just would like to read a document on how you got to this decision, some sort of comparison between either waiting for the next budget biennium and purchase it, or why purchasing, whatever this was, two, or 1.7 odd million dollars versus leasing. I, I'm simply, yeah. I'm just trying to understand the totality of the analysis of how you got to deciding that lease is better than buying.
Jump in here as translator. Is there a way we can get a follow-up on this item from you? That's a document that includes the explanation that you just gave us on a budget basis, maybe with Kelly Cochran?
Yeah, I can certainly do that. And I can pull, I mean, I can pull, we have, in the process of getting to this point, we went through a purchase, outright purchase contract, what that would look like. We have those dollar values. I can share those with the council. We can do it at next meeting if we like, and you should have had attachment, it should have been specific to the agreement that is, is the lease agreement currently.
He wants to see a cash flow analysis. That's just my guess.
Okay.
Yeah. Other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Fields. We've got two questions. So, Ms. Stewart first, first to the punch here.
Thank you. I admittedly am very, I am looking forward to seeing it one more time. We do have the lease in front of us, but the comparison to the, to the purchase would be really helpful, and I'm hearing also that it, you know, it is the various buckets of money, and regardless of where it comes from, I think we're just making sure we're doing our due diligence on behalf of taxpayers writ large, right? So, Mr. Whitney, it's very easy to trust you, and to be very eager to give you the tools you need to do, you and your team, to do your job. So, seeing it one more time would just, in that way, would be super helpful. I wonder how you, how you might characterize what you anticipate in the lease experience, and how that will be different from currently owning your own product to that lease? Do you anticipate more flexibility, less flexibility? What, what are you looking for in terms of red or green flags as you go into that new relationship?
Thank you. The, so, one, what we currently do is, we have to have continual service agreements with Stryker to come in and do services on that equipment. That is an operational cost that is not budgeted. It's something, it comes out of general fund to, as part of operations, to support that equipment. Also, we lean heavily on our, our maintenance shop to do standard service and damaged equipment replacement on, on those devices. So, that is all things that we pay for now. As part of the lease, we have an agreement that incorporated into it, that that service will be done, all costs associated with the service, including, including parts and labor, will be done on a routine through Stryker. They'll come out and do it, and they'll handle all, all 30, 37 pieces of equipment. So, that's, I think that's a benefit to us now. So, that's, I think that's a benefit to us now. It takes some of the burden off us. We're excited about the opportunity for the future of, again, expanding this to other equipment that we have that is more critical equipment. All of it's critical, all of it has a purpose, but equipment that we use for diagnostics and that kind of stuff, the future is great. And what's coming, as technology advances, we're excited to be in a position with this lease to have a platform that we can jump off of to support that moving forward. And that was one of the benefits that we thought of going to this lease. Now, it doesn't tie directly to the Stryker COTS and stair chairs that we're talking about today, but it will, it'll definitely have potential for us as we go onto the electronic side of what Physio provides us. And then, the stability that we have budgeting in the future is the other piece of this that we think is beneficial, is that it'll get, we will know years in advance what our expenses are going to be associated with the lease, and we can use that as predictability as we're doing budgeting in the future and replacements of equipment.
I appreciate that, especially that last part. When you began, you said a phrase that I just want to repeat back to you, because this is the part that maybe we, some clarification could be really helpful. But you said, these are dollars not in the budget, comes out of the general fund. The question I have is, are they general fund dollars that we've already allocated to you in some other way? Or are you asking us for a higher level decision? Because we actually haven't seen anything year-to-date or biennium-to-date just yet, and we're going to be getting that real well soon, but we would not be prepared to make a decision in my mind about that.
Yeah. So, thank you for asking these questions for clarity, because it's helpful to me to be able to tell you. So, the 39% that is ALS funds is in the budget. It is in the general fund. It is allocated for expenses just like these for replacement of equipment as part of assets. That was funded. The BLS side, this was not anticipated, wasn't, the assets weren't done. It is now. We have built, we've built out in the background, under Chief Shepherd, we've built out now asset tracking. We have asset tracking software that tells us all of these big expenses that we have in the fire department. And that's how we discovered this in the last year and a half, as we were going through that. This item rose to the top. I can tell you, there's not other ones out there that are scaring us. There's some on the horizon that we have to deal with as we look at budgets in the future, but this is the only area that we found that was a gap. And it was one that none of us were aware of until we started doing this process of looking at all of our assets in the department. The funding for this is not coming from the general fund for this biennium. We have an agreement, we have, as part of the BLS contract that we have with King County EMS, and again, this goes back to King County EMS levy. It's funds that are available to the Redmond Fire Department. They sit there, and we don't touch them each year. More money gets dropped in that pot until we have a need. In the past, we've used this fund for, examples would be, we've used it for mannequins that we need to purchase, that were unanticipated purchases for us. And I can go down, I'll go down a little bit of a road for you, just to give you an example. We're in the process of starting a new study right now. It's called the FACTS Study. It's an iGEL study for BLS, for airway management for, on the BLS side. And I won't go into super big depth, but to do that, we have to have mannequins that are inabatable. We use inabatable mannequins all the time on the advanced life support site, high fidelity mannequins. But on the BLS side, with lots of providers that we have to train, those mannequins didn't exist. We have CPR mannequins, but not mannequins that we can actually intubate. For this study, to do the training for the crews, we have to have mannequins that are inabitable mannequins, so they can practice that skill. That's an example of where we would go to BLS Core Services and say, hey, we need to purchase these mannequins. It's this amount of money, it was unanticipated in our budget. Can we pull it from Core Services? King County EMS says, they agree that, yes, this is an expense that's appropriate for Core Services. So, we purchase those mannequins, they reimburse us for that purchase. This is the same thing that we're going to do for this, because this was unanticipated in the 22, 23 budget process. We think from a liability standpoint, it's the right thing for us to do now rather than wait for the budget, the next budget to come forward. It also sets us up for future benefits, we believe. And we will pull that money from BLS Core Services to fund this biennium's portion of the budget and then do an adjustment for future budgets. And hopefully, that helps answer the question more with better clarity.
You must feel like you repeated yourself five times today, but I got it in the end. So, thank you, yes. I'm very much in support of this. Would like to see that additional documentation before this goes to consent, but I got it now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Critzer.
I'll keep my comments short, but I would say, I appreciate my fellow council members wanting to have the due diligence and will appreciate getting to look at that additional information. And to what you mentioned around the maintenance costs and other pieces, it'd be great to have that in calculation to understand how that plays into the costs if we are kind of doing more of the fixed versus doing the lease. But I will say, you know, I think we often use ALS, BLS, but the LS being life support and these kind of really critical pieces of things, I think for me, hearing from you, the idea of latest and greatest on some things, maybe we don't need those things, but when we're talking about supporting people's lives, life and death, especially transporting people in situations where, you know, the method of transport may change how they recover or how they survive critical situations. I think, I'm very intrigued by the opportunity to have the latest and greatest for our residents. So, appreciate the, this kind of innovative way of thinking of potentially how we can make sure that we do have those supplies. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I think it's important, too, to recognize clearly, we want to do the best that we can for the patients that we serve, hands down, and that's our number one priority. But this particular equipment that we're talking about today is also firefighter safety. It prevents back injuries. The, and I'll give you a little detail on the auto load systems, and these gurneys are very high-tech, right? They're mechanical in nature. Yes, we have to wheel them, but when we get to the apparatus, the auto load and the gurney work together to do the lifting. So, we're not putting the unstable ground areas where vehicles aren't on flat ground. It doesn't put the injury on the backs of the individuals, it puts it on the mechanics of the vehicle and loads it. So, there's an associated cost with that. But years ago, council and the fire department made the determination that it was better to have that cost in the equipment than potentially debilitating injury in somebody. So, that's part of this, too.
Thank you. Great questions from council. I have one question to add to this. This should be a yes or no question. Since I understand from the conversation that we're essentially putting some pressure on the EMS funds from King County, and if I'm incorrect about that, I'll wait for that document that we're hoping for. Do we require some sort of competitive bid for this lease? And when was that part of this process as well?
It was. So, we do no compete, or no, I'm sorry, not no compete.
Soul source?
Soul source, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Soul source document on this equipment. It is, hands down, again, back to the firefighter safety especially, yes, I get, yes?
Yes.
Yes is the question? Yeah, is that better?
Yes.
For the purposes of firefighter safety and the things, this is equipment that can't meet, that there's not other equipment out there that can really meet the needs that this equipment meets for us.
Okay. And then, if we're using county funds, is there a requirement for competitive bidding? Or is that under our Redmond procurement policies for?
Not, yeah, from the, yes.
Okay.
Redmond only. And the county dollars, just to be super clear, this is not taking more money off the levy that's not already allocated to Redmond. This is Redmond money, that's BLS Core Services money that is allocated to Redmond on an annual basis, and it rolls over if we don't use it. If we don't use it by the end of the levy, then we lose it. So, it's money that we need to spend before the end of the levy, too. So, it's not, it's not money that we're wasting, it's not money that we're pulling off, it's money that's dedicated to Redmond to use responsibly for things like this.
Fabulous. That was very healthy conversation. Thank you. Any other items, questions for this item? How do we feel about consent for this item with the document follow-up? Okay, we have an ask, and we're hoping for this on the 6th.
Very good. And for clarity, just to make sure I get you what you want, we're looking for what it would look like to purchase this equipment outright? Is that correct? And then, a little bit more clarity around where the money funds are coming from.
And I'll ask Mr. Fields, what's the timeframe you're looking for, a lifetime of the equipment?
You know, I think however you want to define it, I'm not telling you how to do the analysis. I just would like to see some evidence that this is a good business decision to lease, because lease, purchase is, there's always a dynamic. There's advantages to both, there's disadvantages to both. I'm just looking for your views on why this is a better way to go. And in particular, if this is something that we're going to do with other types of equipment.
And I'm looking for like, something like six to 10 years out.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I think that Councilmember Critzer had a good point about including the maintenance calculation into both the purchase and lease options, so we can compare the two and understand how that rolls in.
Okay.
Fabulous. If you need help with that, let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving on to item four, and I do want to thank the council for sticking around for these last two items here. We have an amendment to city ordinance, Redmond Municipal Code 9.31.440. And this is with the executive department, Rebecca Mueller?
Mueller.
Mueller, dang it. I guess one way or another. And then, if you can introduce your colleague here, that would be wonderful as well.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Polly Peshaz. I'm one of the deputy prosecutors here in the city of Redmond. Alongside of me is Rebecca Mueller, who is the supervising attorney. We are making this presentation on behalf of the prosecutor's office and also in support of Lorene Hamilton, the Parks and Recreation Director. Just to give some, council, just a brief history just regarding some of the changes in the drug possession over the past couple of years. In February 25th of 2021, the Washington State Supreme Court decided the case of State v. Blake. That case essentially struck down Washington's criminal statute prohibiting possession of a controlled substance. The court faulted the statute's lack of a mental state element, which required the prosecution to show that the defendant knowingly possessed a substance. That court held that the Washington State's strict liability possession violated defendant's due process and was therefore void. Fast forward to May 16th of 2023, Senate Bill 5536 was passed by special session by the Senate and House of Representatives. That Senate bill now makes possession and/or use of a controlled substance or a counterfeit substance in a public place a gross misdemeanor, which is punishable up to 180 days in jail with the first two convictions, a $1,000 fine or both. I just wanted to give council just that brief summary. And with that background, this brings us to our proposal on Redmond Municipal Code Local Park Rule 9.31440. In June of this past year, our office did present to council the future of drug laws here in Washington State and the changes that were made through Senate Bill 5536, and that we would be adopting and incorporating those recent changes. In addition, that our office would actively be reviewing and monitoring any Redmond Municipal Codes that were potentially in conflict with state law. So, one in particular that we did identify was 9.31.440, in that it does not possess the knowing element that is now required for possession. Our proposal, given this conflict, is to adopt by reference and fully incorporate this park rule under Chapter 9.14, under the Redmond Municipal Code Controlled Substance. That chapter is consistent with state laws to include both the knowing element and the penalty provisions. By incorporating, adopting under this park rule, it still allows park representatives as well as officers to cite any individual who is in knowing possession of a controlled substance in a public place such as a park with a gross misdemeanor and subject to the penalty provisions already listed in Chapter 9.14. We have reached out and met with Lorene Hamilton and the Parks Department regarding this proposal. She is on board with this change. And our plan tonight was just to provide a quick summary to council. And our request going forward is to present this to council for consent on November 6th.
Thank you so much for that summary. Questions from the council on this item? Ms. Forsyth.
Thank you. I'm really interested in RCW 69504014, which talks about the possession of marijuana and how that would, from what I'm reading, it sounds like it would now be criminalizing possession of 40 grams of marijuana if we walk through, let's say, anyone could buy something downtown, walk across the park to get to their apartment, and that could be seen as a criminal offense. Can you elaborate on all of that? I've been doing reading of these RCWs, and I'm, my head's spinning a bit. So, help me out here.
This is Rebecca, oh, sorry. You're ready? This is Rebecca, Councilmember Forsyth. I'm just stepping in here. So, the marijuana one is one that this council has already adopted by reference in Chapter If you wouldn't mind repeating your question, that might be one that we could provide some more information on. I'm not sure if that is necessary before this portion of it goes to consent. Would you mind repeating your question?
So, 69504014 talks about the possession of 40 grams or less of marijuana, and there's a penalty. And it seems as though, yes, that is currently within the overall Chapter 914. I'm interested in how that actually plays out in reality when we have so many parks that folks can walk to, to get to our cannabis dispensaries, and what the legal implications of someone carrying, possessing a legally purchased product while walking through one of our parks.
Can I see this? Ms. Forsyth, would you mind repeating the number of that section that you're referring to?
Yes, 69.50.4014.
And just question, is this part of, I don't have the proposed resolution in front of me right now, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the item on the agenda.
It came up in my research for the item, so.
And I'm looking at Ms. Mueller here. Is this related to the, I heard you say that we, it sounds like it's a separate issue from what can be adopted on consent. And I'm looking at the folks in the room here. Hard to see you, apologize for that, Ms. Forsyth. Ms. Critzer.
It is referenced in the, in the draft ordinance.
Thank you.
So, I think it is relevant.
Got it. Thank you.
And council member, we can certainly look into that before it goes forward to council and be able to answer that question further.
Okay, great. Until I hear further on that, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on this.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Critzer. Go ahead. Nope, I was looking to see if there's other questions, so you're up.
Just, I guess I'm a little bit confused in terms of, because it says that we have already amended the municipal code to include these RCWs. So, and what we're actually including here is a reference back to those sections, essentially. Is that because we adopted those, but now the state law of what those RCWs are changed, but we already have them in our code? And now, we're just saying that that's what this other piece supports?
Essentially, yes, in a roundabout way. So, because of the state changes that happened recently, and if you look at, for example, RCW 69.50.4013, subsection 2A does discuss, as well as 3A, does discuss the knowing possession. And so, essentially, we're just going back and cleaning up any Redmond Municipal Code ordinances that are in conflict with the changes in the state law and hereby incorporating it, for example, in 69.4013.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could just go back to Councilmember Forsyth's question, just to provide a little bit more clarification of what we are trying to do. The park rule had been in existence prior to the amendments that Blake generated. And so, in response to Blake initially, there was an adoption of, many of which was already in place and adopted by council under 914010. And with the change in the use of a controlled substance specifically and/or possessing a controlled substance in a public place, which was the newest adoption, that was never before part of misdemeanor drug laws, that was the change in June that came about. And it does not specifically link the marijuana or cannabis possession. And that is referenced in the possession or use of controlled substance RCW under 69504013. Specifically, that is related to controlled substances within a public place and/or possessing it. And so, simply, what our proposal is, is to reference, allow the park rules a reference to what we have already adopted under Chapter 914, and basically eliminate any confusion for park representatives and/or officers in a park as to any conflict between a park rule and a state rule that we have, and eliminate any citations or anything of that sort that would fall under the 931440, because it doesn't have, for example, the knowing element or the appropriate language based on the recent changes in state law. I don't know if that provides any clarification to a question. Or if- element or the appropriate language based on the recent changes in state law. I don't know if that provides any clarification to a question, or if more response would be wanted.
Let me rally the troops here for you for a second. Ms. Forsyth, does that answer your question?
It leads me to think that the proposed amended amendment in front of us is inaccurate, and maybe it was meant to say 69504013 instead of 4014, because 14 does specifically talk about marijuana, so perhaps we just need to look and see if that was a Scrivener's error of some sort. But again, this is a very, a big topic, and I won't be ready to vote until I've received some of those answers.
And I also noticed Chief Low stuck his hand up for a second, I think to answer the question about the case that she proposed as a question, but I don't know if he's still with us here. Chief?
Yeah, I'm still with you. Just, just for clarification and for practical application, if an individual went to one of dispensaries and purchased products in excess of 40 grams, the way it's packaged and bagged, the officer would understand that that came from, I'll say, a legal purchase. For the criminal aspect of it, it would be an individual that had in excess of 40 grams that was packaged for distribution or sales, where that would even be a potential implication, or it would even be potential for an officer to take some type of enforcement action. But given the fact that marijuana is legal, I don't believe that that is of concern. And then to the prosecutor's point before, since the code was amended to reference state law, state law is always going to trump a municipal code, so they would look to the state law first for potential citation or charging before they would go to a municipal code.
Ms. Forsyth, how are you feeling about that?
I had a feeling that was the, the case, and that's why I posed the question, because I needed clarity around it. I'm still curious, though, if the amendment that's put in front of us has the wrong citation, since 4014 strictly talks about marijuana, and it doesn't seem pertinent to this discussion as this is talking about other controlled substances, the ones that are not legal. So I'd really like clarification if that was just a typo.
And we will check on that.
Yes, and just to clarify, I think the memo that we submitted has a reference to Chapter 914 as a whole, which includes things such as definitions, it does include 4013. It does reference the 69504014, Councilmember Forsyth, but it doesn't modify that law in any way. It references the chapter as a whole, and it, that chapter would be enforced as it's currently written, it's just simply referencing it as, as a whole, if that makes any sense. It's not enhancing the marijuana law, it's simply referencing the chapter for enforcement purposes.
And I think the question Ms. Forsyth had is, can we clarify to make sure that it's 914 and not 913, is what I heard?
No, it's 914. It's 914.
Okay.
Yep.
That is the clarification that I understood, is that satisfactory response, Ms. Forsyth, before I move on to Mr. Fields? And you can consider that if you'd like.
I would like to consider that, because it just, if it, if it's in the ordinance as proposed just for a reference, it, it leads to questioning that may not be clear to the general public. It was certainly not clear to me, so I'm wondering if we would just reference, if we remove that reference, if it still has the same impact, or if we reference the other section that you had previously mentioned, which was 4013?
Our intent in referencing the Chapter 914 was, one, was to give some consistency for the city parks representatives to be able to refer to a local Redmond Municipal Code. And again, that Chapter 914 does include everything that the city has adopted regarding drug laws.
Yep. I understand that. It's, it's more the RCW 4014. I'm not, not, not in, like, 4014, or 914, I understand completely, but in the ordinance as drafted, it references 4014.
I'm saying that.
On page three, if that hel, or page two, sorry, if that helps. Middle, middle of page two.
Okay, everybody, we're all gonna take a deep breath. Okay. Okay. And Ms. Forsyth, while these, while Ms. Mueller and her team here is looking up the answer to your question, we, are you also ready for another question?
Yes, and I can.
Do a follow-up by, will, will a follow-up by email satisfy Ms. Forsyth?
I can follow up. I can just explain, what we were doing in our wherethes on page two was to summarize the history of the changes that occurred both in the state and within Redmond. And so we were referencing the changes that had been made, which Ms. Peschaz discussed early on in the presentation of the changes to these specific codes based on Blake, not necessarily a link to this specific park rule, but as a general overview of what the changes were. If that is of some concern for Council and keeping it from going to consent, we can certainly look at modifying that initial, I guess, information as part of the ordinance.
I see a couple of different outcomes on this item, and I wanted to make sure folks that had a question get a chance to ask. One of them is, Ms. Forsyth, if you would like to propose an amended version, you're welcome to do that, and we can follow up with the prosecutor's office. Alternately, we can put this item on new business, or we can put it on consent and it can be pulled. So those are three things that are offhand, and I didn't know if Ms. Kritzer, if you had a comment or a question, and Mr. Fields had his hand up as well, and put it down, so. Go ahead, Ms. Kritzer.
I was just gonna say that I think, since it's in the wherethes section, as you mentioned, it's more a summary, it seems like it wouldn't notably change if, if we wanted to strike that particular reference, so I would support that if we just wanted to do that, and then we could put it on consent if, if that was, if that was preferable by Councilmember Forsyth. And I would say, reading RCW 69.50.413, I, I do understand where Councilmember Forsyth is coming from, because it looks like that language is much more applicable to what we're talking about, so I do understand what she's asking about, but I would, I would support Councilmember Forsyth working with, with the staff to make an appropriate change, especially since it's in the wherethes section.
And this is assuming we need full consensus to go to consent agenda, so just wanted to clarify that. Ms. Forsyth, I saw a thumbs up on that response from Ms. Kritzer, so it sounds like if there's some willingness to work with you folks before it goes to the November 6th agenda, we can do it on consent, and if not, council members who are opposed to the item may pull it and for discussion. Sounds good? Got all the process here? Got a hand up from Ms. Forsyth?
Yeah, so as we just went through a couple of weeks ago with items going on consent, it was agreed in this room for consent, and I still would prefer seeing it on new business.
That's fine. The item does not have full consensus, so it will not go on the consent agenda. It will be a new business item. Thank you. All right, I think that's all we have for you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And Chief Low, if you can wrap us up here with the closer on item five, Redmond Police Department Quarter Three Crime Report.
Yes, thank you. So this is our quarterly crime update. I will start the update with the police demographic dashboard, as Council is aware, and for the listening audience, over the past year, we have been embarking on making all of our data and information transparent to the community by way of public-facing interactive dashboards. What I'm displaying for you is the demographic dashboard that will cover the actions of the officers by way of arrests, citations, and bill contacts. It identifies how the officer came in contact with the subject, if it was the result of a call for service, if it was something that the officer observed, or came in via our online reporting system. Like the other dashboards that we have currently active and forward-facing, which are our Use of Force dashboard and our Community Resource Officer Dashboard, formerly known as the School Resource Officer Dashboard, it is similar in that you can filter through and look at it based on things that are of interest to the end user. So we have that available. We are anticipating that going live on November 1st for the council members. If you have any questions or want to interact with it, if you'll just contact me directly, and we can work with our TIS staff to create that environment for you, because since it's not live, it's not available for you to tinker around with, but we can make that available. Next, we will get into our actual crime update for the third quarter. So as of right now, we are 12.8% up in our calls, calls for service as compared to last year. As far as our arrests, we are up 7.3% overall in our arrests for this year as compared to last year. We have seen a 21% increase in auto thefts also. Shoplifts, which we know is a, a regional and a national problem, we've seen a 6.3% increase locally in that particular statistic as well. In our traffic collisions, we've seen a 17.1% increase in traffic collisions, and I'll go into more details about that momentarily. I'm sorry, I lost my last slide. On our property crimes, we've actually seen a 3.8% decrease in, in property crimes. And then in our violent crimes, we've seen a 7.8% decrease in violent crimes. Now, I mentioned before about the traffic collisions, what we've seen in the traffic collisions, a vast majority of those are, I'll call, low-speed, distracted type of collisions, in that we have not seen a significant number of injuries in the vast majority of our traffic collisions. So we've increased our presence with our motor officers, we've increased our social media and warnings to individuals about distracted driving, and we will continue to conduct emphasis patrols in our high-impacted areas for those particular incidents. Additionally, we will be working collaboratively with the State Patrol and other East Side agencies on a emphasis patrol on the East Side, so bringing in additional resources to address the problem, not just in Redmond, but on the East Side, because we're seeing similar things as relates to the traffic collisions. In the auto theft, as was reported out previously in our updates, there has been a lot of social media influence, or a lot of social media that has influenced what we are seeing in our stolen vehicles around Hondas and Kias. As you may be aware, there is a, I'll call it a class action lawsuit that several municipalities have joined in against those manufacturers as a result of some of the design flaws that are contributing to this particular increase for those two particular type of vehicles that are being stolen. The other trend that we are seeing there as it relates to stolen vehicles are on older model vehicles. Our detectives are working very diligently as far as to connect the dots with those. We have not seen any discernible patterns, if you will, as far as where the vehicles are being recovered, you know, at the summer in Seattle, summer in South King County, summer in our neighboring jurisdictions, but we are working, you know, with those other jurisdictions to try and address those particular problems. And with that, if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer them at this point.
Thank you, Chief. Got a question from Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. This is, and the dashboard's really interesting to look at, especially on the heels of revising our code on Blake. I'm interested if you could talk more about, I think it's slide number three, and the drug equipment violations, and how in the two years of Blake, that number seemed to have reduced dramatically of the number of arrests, and what you see as the trend moving forward.
Give me one sec, I'm trying to get back to.
It's down near the bottom on this, not this page, sorry. The, oh yeah, it is this page. My, my type is different than yours.
And what was the question? You said drug equipment violations?
Correct. So, I mean, it's my understanding that drug equipment violations is similar to the possession in relation to the Blake decision, and it looks like the numbers of the violations for drug and narcotic and drug equipment violations dropped dramatically during the two years that the Blake decision was in effect. I'm just interested in hearing from you what you think moving forward with the new state law looks like.
Given how the state is approaching it, I would not see that number necessarily increasing, because the, the focus is not on enforcement or incarceration, it's on treatment. So moving forward, if an individual was found with, you know, drug paraphernalia or usage items, it would be geared more towards a diversion, or if there was enforcement action, you know, we've been very successful, you know, with our community court. So I guess the, the short answer is I don't see that number increasing moving forward, given the current state of affairs around, you know, drug possession and drug usage.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Forsyth. Thank you, Chief. Other questions from the Council? And I did want to mention, Ms. Stewart needed to check out for a meeting at 6:00, so she has left. Mr. Fields?
Yeah, thanks for the data. Just related, where are we at with vacancy rate for police departments currently?
So currently, our vacancy rate has remained at about 10%, as it has pretty much for my tenure here. We are authorized 88 commissioned officers, we have 79 positions. This year, we have actually hired 16 commissioned police officers, and we remain at our attrition rate of six to seven officers per year. We are on, and we are on track for that again this year.
Okay, great. And then, just a quick follow-up, are we roughly experiencing, continuing to experience a, sort of an offset on overtime, sort of offsetting that with vacancies?
So fortunately, because of the vacancies, my salary savings actually covers the overtime, so from a budgetary perspective, we are not seeing what I'll call a cost overruns in the overtime necessarily. Given some of the recent conflicts and protests in the area, we have been supporting our partners on the East Side, so we will see, you know, an increase in costs, but again, because of those cost savings, I don't anticipate being over budget in totality or necessarily in the overtime specifically.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Any other questions from the Council for the Chief? I'm getting head shakes in the room here. Thank you for this informational report. The dashboard looks great, and I think with that, we are at the end of our meeting at 6 o'clock. Thanks to Council for sticking around, really appreciate it, and we will see you back here at 7 o'clock. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.